Okay, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
We do have a core pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total one hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. Motion's been made. And seconded.
Hang on, guys.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a change on the minutes. Whenever we approve the mayor pro tem, it was listed as Mr. Underwood instead of me.
Okay, can we get that taken care of?
Yes, I've noted that and it will be changed.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we had a motion, we had a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved. Remarks of visitors.
We receive none.
Bids, tandem dump truck surcharge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Before you guys, you have a, I'm not really even sure what to call this. It's not really a change order. But we got word from the manufacturer of the tandem dump truck, dump truck that you've already approved, that they're going to be adding a surcharge to that price. So the price that we all agreed to has changed by sixty-seven hundred dollars. So my request to you today is to please allow us to still purchase this dump truck. We need it very badly. The guys use it very, very frequently. In fact, the old truck is in the, will soon be in the sale for the Purple Wave. So I'd like to use the proceeds from the Purple Wave sale to pay the difference for the new tandem dump truck. It's not been manufactured and we've not written a check. So I don't see how I can wiggle out of this. Just like anything else, whether you're buying pickups or crock pots, I think the prices are going up, so.
I have a question, Matt. When you say us wiggle out of it, how did they wiggle into this? That's my question. I don't see to where we're, aren't they under some kind of obligation? Didn't we have a deal? You know, I think it's on them, not us. And are we so, such bad shape for a dump truck that we're going to give in? We did not agree to that price. They just changed it last minute. Where I come from, that's welting on a deal.
Kevin, so the supplier, which is Truck Centers, is passing along a charge that's from Daimler. And they're applying it to every single construction year twenty-two truck that they're going to build. And there's, there's more than one. So the people that we have the deal with are not necessarily changing the terms of the deal, but the supplier, where they get a large chunk of their parts from, in this case, Daimler, which would be the motor in this case. They've increased their costs. So the, the entire surcharge is essentially coming from one of their suppliers. And they're in a spot where they're passing along to all their customers who purchased on the state contract. So this affects the MoDOT state contract and anyone who purchased under the state contract, which includes us.
So have we looked any other things out there?
You wouldn't be able to get a truck to meet the spec and be able to take delivery on it within a year, if not longer.
Yeah.
Greg, they did the same thing to me on my pickup truck.
Did they?
Ordered it and basically they raised the price four grand. And they said, either take it or leave it. They don't care because they'll sell it for more money.
But they haven't built it and they can't pull that over our heads. You know, I, I get it, but you know, I, I just bought a new pickup too, same deal. And I said, I will not pay it. If you want to sell me this truck, this is what it's going to be. I, I, you know, because I know you're still making money at the old price. And, you know, I just, I just think that, you know, I'm just a no vote on this. It just irritates me. So I get it, but, you know, it is what it is.
I don't think it's fair, but I, I don't think people have any choice, you know, because there's so many people wanting them to get in line and, 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 you know, if you don't want it, somebody else will buy it. So I don't like it, but I think we kind of have to go.
I think it would be different if the truck had been built and it was sitting on a lot form, it was a solid asset. But they haven't even built the truck. You know what I'm saying? If this, you know, this was a lot full of trucks and it's like, you don't want it, we'll get it. They haven't even built the truck.
That's the way mine was too, though, Kevin. I ordered it and waited eight months to get it. And then when it came in, it went, it went up four thousand dollars from what they quoted me. And they just said nothing they can do about it. So, yeah, I had the option to walk away, but I waited eight months for it, so.
Right.
That's kind of what's going to happen.
We ordered this truck in October, so.
Kevin, we just got a, we just got a new fuel truck too, and we got screwed on it. So no matter what, it's, it is today's world, we're not, we're not going to win. You're gonna, we're gonna have to pay a price no matter what we do. So since we already got it in the plans, we might as well just eat it and get it before it goes up again, because it will more likely go up again.
And in fairness, we throw the sixty-seven hundred dollar surcharge out. The total cost, our amount that is over budget, is twenty-nine hundred bucks. So the total cost of the truck now with the surcharge is one fifty-two nine. We budgeted a hundred and fifty. So the sale of the old truck should more than adequately cover the difference. So from a, from a budgetary standpoint, the, the impact is, obviously, twenty-nine hundred dollars is, is nothing to sneeze at, but we, we will be able to cover the amount.
But we just hoping we don't see another increase, because the way things are going, don't be surprised there'll be another increase before it's even done.
Well, I think the hard part, and not to, to belabor the point, but the hard part for us moving forward will be, how much of, how much of an increase do we factor into our budget discussions? Because we know this is going to be something that's going to continue for a while. So if historically we put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in for a tandem dump truck into our budget, I think we're going to have to clearly make that number one fifty-five or one sixty when we're sitting down and talking about, you know, departmental budgets moving forward.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the new price of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
No.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion has passed five to one. Ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have bill number forty-six seventy-nine. Would the clerk please read this bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-six seventy-nine, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, amending the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year budget and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-six seventy-nine is now open for discussion. Staff report, please.
Good evening, everyone. So in your packet, you have everything with the budget amendment attached. And most of them you should recognize, because a lot of them have been brought to you for approval. So does anyone have any specific questions?
If there's no further discussion, could I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-six seventy-nine for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-six seventy-nine for the second time?
Bill number forty-six seventy-nine, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, amending the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year budget and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Bill forty-six seventy-nine has passed.
Thank you.
We have bill forty-six eighty on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-six eighty, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, amending chapter six-ten of the code of ordinances of the city of Festus regarding temporary right-of-way permits for restaurants to use sidewalks and or parking stalls located in the right-of-way for additional seating, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-six eighty is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Certainly, Mayor, Council. This is, as we've discussed at our last two meetings, the, obviously, we talked about the fees and the permit structure was the main concern out of our last talk. That, of course, has been amended. There is no daily fees. There is an application fee of one hundred dollars, but obviously outlines the terms and conditions for which the permit would be issued. So if there's no additional questions, we didn't really make any substantial changes since the last time we talked.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-six eighty for the second time in title only. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-six eighty for the second time?
Bill number forty-six eighty, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, amending chapter six-ten of the code of ordinances of the city of Festus regarding temporary right-of-way permits for restaurants to use sidewalks and or parking stalls located in the right-of-way for additional seating, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Bill forty-six eighty has passed. We have bill forty-six eighty-one tonight. On the agenda, will the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-six eighty-one, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat of twelve forty Horine Road and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-six eighty-one is now open for discussion. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a three lots that they're wanting to split and divide up out on Horine Road. It's twelve forty Horine Road. It's currently two lots. One of the lots has a, an empty dilapidated home on it. They're going to knock down and build three new homes. It's the same builder that's building on Horine now on inside of the loop. So they're nice new homes. The only peculiarity is the lots are undersized for R-one zoning, added by about five feet on width. The overall size far exceeds the ten thousand required square feet. And they went to board of adjustments, granted a variance on the lot widths.
That makes it what, eight? I mean, eight homes now are going to be in there?
No, this is down there.
It's a little bit further around the corner.
Right.
Yeah.
This would be three homes on this lots. And then eight on the, on the current one, there are eight on that subdivision.
Mark, what is the one?
Eighty feet for R-one, correct.
These are seven.
Just over seventy-five feet, that's correct. They do reflect lots that are currently over in Bluff City and across the street, and even on that side of the road are narrower lots.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-six eighty-one for the second time in title only? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-six eighty-one for the second time?
Bill number forty-six eighty-one, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat of twelve forty Horine Road and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Bill forty-six eighty-one has passed.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is new business.
The Tangled Foot Association in your pack and has requested a special event permit. Do you ladies want to come forward and explain your event?
I actually didn't know we were going to be speaking, so Michelle, did you have something? So it's kind of like a continuation of the Tangled Foot event, the Taste of Tangled Foot, that we kind of morphed into a different version of that, where restaurants won't all be on the street. They'll have specials going on during the event, which is on the eighteenth.
Yeah, so, well, we were going to do the Taste of Tangled Foot, but we decided to change it. And we're basically calling it Summerfest. We just would like to close the street down from Mill to Brierton, right? That's the end of, I'm getting those streets confused sometimes. Anyway, because we'd like to, we're going to push it over into Crystal also. So we have Petal and Pie down in the Crystal City side that they're going to talk to Crystal City and see if they can close then from Brierton all the way to Truman, so that we can have the entire stretch closed down. We're going to have some, some small bands. The Tangled Foot Art Gallery is going to get artists and they'll have artists throughout the whole stretch of the street. And we like to put tables and such and just invite people down. We'll have the restaurants, like Laura said, are going to have specials in there. I think I talked to, did I talk to you? Okay, about the, the restaurants coming out onto the sidewalk or into the street with selling things, but they will have to, I'll let them know that they have to get the picnic permit or the caterer permit. Yes, they're going to do that. So they may or may not, we're not sure with that, but I'm going to let each one of them know that they have to deal with that on their own. For us, we just would like the street shut down so we can have easy flow of people. We're hoping to have a lot of people. We don't know, of course, but we're just hopeful. So we'd just like to make that easier for everyone to get through and back and forth.
And then we were also, this is kind of the beginning stages, we just kind of did a small, you know, blurb and took it to each store that wants to be involved. They can come out on the street in front of their own store and do whatever they want. And then kind of just bring everybody down.
And you're going to call it Summerfest?
Tangled Foot Summerfest.
Tangled Foot Summerfest. Sounds like a good idea to me.
So this will be like the first thing.
Yeah.
But this will be easier, because the last time, every restaurant was actually required to be on the street. So like Lamb's Garden, that's just too hard for them, so they didn't get involved. And, I mean, Tatro's will probably be over on the street, because they can't obviously be. And then Pogliino's, they bought actually a big oven just for that event. So she'll be able to be out on the street and they did really well with pizza sales and that.
Good. Is there any discussion?
A question, did any of the businesses have a problem with what you guys were doing?
We have not heard from any Festus businesses. And the only one in Crystal City I talked to, and they're fine with things now too.
Okay, good, good.
Is there any other questions?
Police and fire, thoughts?
Oh, yes, we're taking something to each business and getting everybody's.
I just have posters printed and I'll be picking those up tomorrow. And we'll be distributing to every, every single business along the Festus area in the Crystal too, but you guys don't worry about that.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to allow the Summerfest to be held on June the eighteenth of twenty-twenty-two to close down the Main Street from Mill to Brierton.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Let's have a Summerfest. Old business.
We have none.
Reports. Councilman Weiner.
Can't hear. I'm sorry, Kevin. I was, I thought I saw some trucks over by the library maybe the other day, maybe doing a little preliminary work over there. That was good to see, because we've got an asset that is sitting there and hopefully we'll be able to turn it into something that's going to be good for the downtown area, for the, for all of Festus. Kind of just a little quick thing here. I was behind my store the other day and I saw two people walking behind there. And I know there's been homeless problems and things, but I saw these two man and wife, male and female, walking down there. And I just went up and started talking to them. And I think we just need to keep this in mind. These two particular people, we always think that, like, the homeless are from somewhere else. And, but they were actually like, they'd actually gone to Festus High School and Crystal High School. And so I was kind of, that was kind of an eye-opener for me. I haven't done really anything to, to help or not help the homeless, but I just, I just thought it was worth mentioning, mentioning that. And that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you. That is, that is a problem that at some point in time, we're going to have to address. Councilman Boyer.
I have nothing at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Collier.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Templeton.
Nothing either.
And I got it right. Councilman Vins.
Oh, I have a lot. What did I do that to you, Greg?
He would.
Sam knows about it. And I talked to the new, that's getting appointed tonight, the new mayor at Crystal City, about Walmart's grand reopening next Friday, May sixth, at eight o'clock in the morning. They would like any council, any mayor, any Twin City Chamber of Commerce to be there for that grand reopening. Walmart, Walmart's a big asset. You know, they take care of the police, the fire on both sides, and plus they do a lot of charity. So I wanted to let the council to know that, because Crystal's letting their council in, and plus the mayor would already know about it, the new mayor. And so, and then I was that Saturday night with Chief Wood and probably some other people there at the benefit for Kevin Kramer at Mouse Races. First time I've been to Mouse Race. That was, that was a great turnout. A lot of, it looks, seemed like a lot of money was, you know, brought in for that and everything. So that was a good benefit there and stuff. And so, but not a bit, but now on the Walmart issue, not only Walmart coming in, if any businesses in Festus, we need to appreciate any business that comes or if they want us to be there for that, something like that, I think it's, it's a major plus, you know, to welcome any new business or any business that wants to have something. I, I just, without those businesses, it really would hurt, you know. Festus needs to show their appreciation any way we can.
I think we're notified about it.
Right.
Sometimes we try to beg on all the salmonella's later.
Yes.
Right, so I, I think it's very important. I just think it's very important for any time, because I've been to a couple, but I know, I know, I got to work like anybody else, but unless, like, some of you retired people, but.
Easy on that.
But I, I can get away pretty easy when I need to, especially if it's around the golf. But, no, I just want, I mean, it's, it's just be good if we can, you know, anybody can make that stuff, so. But size the, that and that, and that's about it, sir. Oh, and I'm glad to see that railroad, hopefully, trestle. Yeah, Greg put out that Spectrum gets their ordeal done and finally get that new damn trestle over there on Horine. So.
Yes.
That will be nice.
Is that it?
That's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tenon.
I, I just happened to swing in the annual trash recycle this weekend. That looked like that went over really well. I don't know if it's a good thing, but there's a lot of people came there. So.
The spring and fall cleanups were popular events and we did the shred event a week or two before that. That was very well attended, so we're going to probably combine them and make it really big and really inconvenient for anybody to go by. No, it'll be well attended.
I think I'm going to hang out there next. They had a lot of food there too.
Yes, they did.
I saw you wrestling a couple of tires. Were those ones that you were getting ready to take over or?
Those really big ones?
Just about had one roll into Fifth Street, so.
No, it, it was, I thought it was, I've never gone before, so I just kind of went there and walked over there and, and I thought it was really interesting. And then people started calling me, asking me what they could bring. And that was weird, because I really didn't know what to tell them. Because I saw mattresses and everything go there.
There's some very, there's some limitations, obviously. Construction waste, batteries, paint, things like that. You have, there's, either special requirements or you just can't bring them at all. But they'll take just about anything else.
What's the lady's name that was in charge of that? Do you know?
That's the folks from Waste Connections, but.
Very nicely.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
All righty, thank you. Councilman Dennis.
Nothing, sir.
All righty. Well, first of all, I would like to give the police department a job well done on the shooting that we had on Fourth Street. The suspect is not in custody yet, but we know who he is. I'd also like to say thanks, Josh, for coming out that night and getting that camera, getting that film for, for the, for the police department, which helped in in that investigation. Everybody did, did a great job with that. As Councilman Vins mentioned, supposedly on the twenty-eighth, the Spectrum or whoever it is, it has the wires running over, are supposed to take those down so that Burlington Northern can begin their construction. I will be really happy to see that. It's one of the things that, when I became mayor, Greg and I talked and I told him, one of the things I wanted done was to get rid of that bridge the way it is, that trestle the way it is, and put it into at least the twentieth century. That is, that is in the works and it looks like it's going to be heading down. The only, you know, we want to make sure that we get a fair enough warning from the railroad so we can, which is hard to do, to be able to let everybody that lives in Alexander Heights and on that side of the tracks know that you'll have know that you'll have to use Central and take the long way.
That's only, usually they only shut that down for three days or something like supposedly, because they cannot shut a main line down for more than three days of what.
Well, let's hope that's what it turns out to be.
That's how fast they have to have everything in place is what we're told, so.
Well, let's hope that happens that way. I believe that's all I have.
Just a quick reminder for everyone, as you know, our next meeting would be on May ninth. That is the observance of President Harry Truman's birthday. And city offices will be closed, so the meeting will be on Tuesday, the tenth. As we discussed in some conversations previously, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware, Jim especially, that next meeting will be on a Tuesday at six. That'll be the only one we're moving, hopefully, until we get to the holidays.
Is there any other discussion or any other comments? Hearing none. How are we going to adjourn? Mike's not here.
Not here.
There we go. Councilman Collier has made a motion to adjourn. I need a second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.